I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next up is roll call, and I want to have a very hearty welcome to Mrs. B.
Yeah.
For making it back, and we have one absent, Mrs. Senkow.
Two.
Or, I'm sorry, Senkow and Carolyn Etta. All right, um, next is the approval of the consent agenda, which is attached to your packet. And the financials from people.
I move that we approve the consent agenda for tonight's meeting.
Support.
Okay, did anybody notice any errors, omissions, corrections to be made? If there are none, I'll take it to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That carries. Public comments, anybody here to address the board? Okay.
I just wanted to say that last Tuesday night, I had a chance to go to the French club, um, the French play that they did. I was so impressed. I know they didn't have too much time to put it together, but it was so, I've been really grateful for what the French program has been for my daughters. Um, I have a first grader who's taking, I think she's probably the youngest, um, I don't think they only started second grade. She's really thriving, and um, I think that it's really added to her school experience, because I feel like first grade is kind of easier for her, so she needed like a little extra challenge. And then I have an eighth grader who's taking it as a high schooler, and I just really appreciate it. She, that one loves learning, and she is just really excelling, so. And I even have a boy in ninth grade who's taking Spanish, so I just really appreciate the depth of that program.
Thank you very much.
I was gonna say something too. I'm super nervous, uh, because I don't want to say anything wrong, but I actually want to talk about something that's really awesome, and that's actually our sex ed board, and I know that it's highly sensitive, very controversial at times, but also it's something I've been wanting to be a part of since I was in high school myself, and I started seeing, well, in childhood even, you know, you learn things, and you learn, um, certain things can, with education, better ways can be gone about things. And uh, I wanted to say that being on board for the last two years has been everything I wanted it to be. We've tackled topics that are hard to address. We have an amazing community involved. Parents that obviously care deeply, and community members that care deeply, and our amazing Danielle Rizley, who cares deeply. And uh, I'm just really grateful to be a part of that, and I'm really grateful that um, we have that here, because it's not offered everywhere, and I absolutely understand that that is a privilege that we have. Um, and there's challenges, but I honestly, lately, I've been seeing them as more as growing pains. So anyways, I want to thank you. I know Lillian's on it with me as well, and I've really been grateful for all of the diversity that is on that board. Uh, we all bring the best we can, and uh, most of that is heart, and research, and passion, and um, I just hope that we're doing as good as everybody would want us to, so, thank you.
Thank you. Would both of you give Kristi your names just for the record?
Oh, yes. Good point, thank you. Uh, I'm Leanne Lowey, and my address was, that was part of it, right? Seven hundred Ruttiman.
Thank you.
I'm Lillian Sutton, and I'm at twenty-seven ninety-five Memorial Drive.
Thank you very much, both of you. All right, we're gonna move to committee reports, just one, no student report. Just finance committee tonight.
Oh, yay, I did it all for myself.
Yep.
Nothing unusual in finance tonight. I think we're investigating um, some shared service time with another school up north. Uh, if that kind of pans out, it'll be an opportunity for us to, to share some of our resources and get a little income, um, which always helps, and uh, if it does come to a point where we have a contract that needs to approve, that'll go in front of the board. So that's good, good work, uh, on that side as well, so we'll see where that goes. Um, we're still tracking this year for the budget, so the budget that Mark and Jess will put together, uh, I think in June for our June meetings, um, we are going to obviously look at a balanced budget for next year, so we're tracking for that, uh, more to come on that. Other than that, everything looked fine. Uh, looked at, uh, you know, general, general fund, financials, account payables, food service, technology, city fund, and capital, food, rent funds, all looked in order as far as we can see, and um, all the way up through, of course, our big bond project, um, or our big April bond of last year, uh, we can see that money going to work right now, so all, all looks good there right now.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much for that, and now we move on to a presentation from Kurt Babcock, uh, the state of the district.
Actually, I'm gonna have a little bit of help with Jen and John, um, but first, uh, just to let everybody kind of know the direction we're heading here. Um, this is, this was put together by the whole administrative team, um, and I really appreciate all of their work. Uh, we did, um, change things up starting this year. We're gonna base everything off of the strategic plan, and we'll be, we'll be using this presentation and um, adding to it uh, as years come, so that we can start to look at some longitudinal data and some changes along the way too, so. To get started, um, I'm fighting allergies, so hopefully I don't do that whole presentation, but uh, you wanna go ahead and flip that, Paul? Gotta start out with some cool pictures, some kids and people in our building, and I think we even got some grandparents there from, um, so, we got a few different pictures along the way here, just to, so you don't have to just look at data, but, all right. Uh, obviously, I'm not gonna read every slide to you guys, but start with our mission and our vision, and then those drive the next slide. Um, these are all things you see all over the place, uh, board agendas throughout the building, and they helped us formulate the new strategic plan. I really like the bottom one, though, that the stakeholders of the district will expect high academic standards and citizenship expectations for all students, work in tandem with us, help us foster a safe learning environment. Those bullet points I really love, because I think it does depict North Meskegon and how we all have a vested interest in this building and all of the lives that are in it, so. And here is our strategic plan. Um, everybody on the board was involved, and actually, some of our people in the audience were involved in forming this. We have four main goals, and those are gonna be the basis of today's presentation. One, the first one is being a top-ten academically performing school. How we came up about that is, um, because we're ranked in so many different ways, and there's, they all use a different equation, and they all have different factors that are involved, and um, so what we did is we actually met with the consultant at the ISD and said, we want to have a consistent way to rank ourselves at a high academic level that makes sense to our community. And um, the US News and World Report actually has a really good ranking system. It's um, uh, recognized across our nation, um, the main, the metrics that they use pretty fast. And so the things that they look at are um, kind of the things we think our community would want. They want our kids to be um, college-ready, be prepared to take um, high rigor courses in AP, um, obviously graduate. Those are the things that are in that equation. Not that we don't support the kid that goes right to work, or that those are some of the main things that go into the, um, how they rank schools, and you're gonna see a slide a little bit later that shows, are we at ten percent right now or not? You're gonna have to wait on that one. So, um, nope, yes, uh, the second goal is that our students, well, all of our students will feel safe and accepted in our school. We're gonna communicate effectively with our full school community. We've expanded some of that today, you're gonna hear about that. And then we're gonna do all that stuff with um, being financially or fiscally conservative and responsible. Paulie? So now, I'm gonna hand it off to John and Jen, and they're gonna talk about a bunch of student performance data. You guys, really? Okay, it does start with.
Uh, should we stand? Are you, do we need to be in the camera?
No.
Okay, so.
People see me, but it's, please do that. And this will all be put online as well.
You wanna do the question?
Sure, yeah, so one of the things we look at is our state assessments, um, with proficiency and college readiness, so that is obviously the PSAT and the SAT for the secondary, um, and we'll get, dive into that, how we're doing. And then college, um, curriculum breadth specifically, they're talking about AP courses, like what classes, how many students we have taking AP courses, how many AP courses we offer, how well students do when they take the AP exam, and then they kind of, they look at all of those data points together. So, um, we get credit, for lack of a better word, based on the percentage of AP courses that we offer, um, based on our size, which we offer a wide variety, um, really impressive our size, and then the number of students that take them, and then um, we, we check how they do each year, so that they can hopefully earn some college credits, and if not, at least be better prepared for college.
So the elementary, which school boards were this, we uh, updated our curricular resource for math last year, from Bridges' second edition to third edition, and we worked with Carrie Carlson, who's a math consult, or math coach, excuse me, from the ISD, uh, all year this year to make sure that we're using it as intended with fidelity, and um, and then we also at the same time piloted two different curricular resources for ELA, reading and writing, uh, and then we selected Bookworms, so we're already primed to have a lot of professional development on how to use Bookworms as a curricular resource with full fidelity next year. And we were due to have these kind of refreshes or complete overhauls of what we're doing. What we've been doing did well, but we knew we could do better, so that's what we're, we've been setting about, so.
And then, and the bullet points that you see on each of these starting slides before there's a bunch of data are, are things that have happened this year that kind of like check the box, that we're advancing with what the strategic plan um, wants us to be concentrating on.
We, also, I just want to add, we talked about dual enrollment and CTC too, so like AP is, I think it says fifty-three percent of our students, juniors and seniors are in some type of AP course, at least one, many of them are taking more than one AP class, but we have many students that are taking classes at Baker and Community College, dual enrollment, and then our CTC numbers are also rising, and that's that career in college readiness and that post-secondary. So, yes, it focuses a lot on college, but also that career readiness piece as well, and the trades, and how they can get that post-secondary education and that realm too, so.
And the interesting votes maybe, can be summarized, MTSS stands for multi-tiered system of supports. So all kids get tier-one supports, some get tier-two, and then a select few get tier-three, depending on what level of need that kid has. And so there's several initiatives, which is not even remotely exhaustive, of the things we're doing DK twelve to help kids that have different levels. Uh, so this is actually starting to get to be out-of-date information, but this is um, our in-house NWEA map test that we take three times a year. This, these scores are from the end of January, start of February. Uh, is this, this would just be um, what our, how our kids did relative to pre-COVID norms nationally on math. So, yellow, green, and blue doing pretty well, orange could use some help, and red could use quite a bit of help. And actually, I was hoping we would have enough time, but we still have probably three to five percent of our kids who didn't take the spring test yet because of absences and such, but um, it, it looks even more positive, because our staff was still learning how to use Bridges correctly the first half of the year. And reading is the same. Uh, again, like, these, this looks all right, because it is all right, but we know we can do a lot, lot better at North Meskegon, um, and that's why we're switching to Bookworms and all working together as a building-like team to do that well. So this is the same thing, but for reading.
This is our middle school, so we also do the NWEA or math testing, so sixth through eighth grade, exactly the same as the elementary, three times a year. Um, this is our winter data. They're just finishing their spring testing, it's really heavy testing season, so we try to spread it out a little bit, so our kids aren't testing. Melanie is over there shaking her head, she helps our, some of our students with that. Um, but similar to um, what John shared, the cool part, um, that both elementary and the middle school gets to do is when they look at that data, um, we can use Math Accelerator that will take each student individually and break down where their strengths are, where their areas of growth are, and they can get targeted interventions, that they, academic practices that they can work on to help improve those gap areas. Um, in middle school, Joanna Berry teaches a numeracy class, which we pull the data from when John has students that come to us. Um, and they do title and interventions as well too, um, that we can pull, we use this data to support the kids who might need that extra help. Um, and on the flip side, the students that are advanced, we can challenge them DK twelve to have some more advanced classes. So really, um, honestly, scratch from the surface, I would say, at the secondary, I'd be starting to use this data more, but each year we get a little better and better, so be more intentional about taking the data, and what are we gonna do with it to use it to help, help kids um, across the continuum. So that's our math, and then the next one is our ELA, very similar um, to what the, I'm not sure what it looks like. Questions, again? This is our ninth grade, um, PSAT scores. I was hoping that the scores from this year would be released, but not yet. So the cool part about this that I like is you can see our school is the top line, the district, it's exactly the same thing, but, and then it's the state, um, and then um, the nation, and then internationally. So what I love about this is you can see that our average is above um, state and national, so that's always really cool trend to see. Um, that's our PSAT for math. The next one is PSAT for reading and writing, ELA, and it's the same thing. You can see that we trend um, higher than the state and the national average, which is really awesome. Um, and you'll, if you keep going, uh, yeah, same exact thing for tenth grade, PSAT, and then eleventh grade, um, SAT. That is the, um, what most of our juniors will use, um, when they're looking to apply at colleges. They can take it here, they can also take that other times, but this is the score that they took here. Um, and what is really cool is our um, ELA um, team has died, has taken this data and um, looked at the areas of the assessment that kids were having the most trouble, and when they were doing their curriculum review and figuring out where their gaps were in their um, alignment, we're able to go, oh, we know this kid's really need to work on nonfiction, and these are the areas, so they, so they're starting to really dive into that. So that's been, that's been fun to um, see. So that's our eleventh grade ELA. This is from twenty-three and twenty-four, so um, I couldn't go back any further, because college board is really awesome to work with. So um, it wouldn't let me since I probably could ask you though, um, but you'll notice that spring of twenty-twenty-three, our scores were actually, I think I might have those flipped, they're flipped. They should say the other thing, because our scores actually went down this year, but you'll see that the trend nationwide and statewide was that way, and so when we look at the data across the nation, that seems to be the trend. We, we still trend above the average, but that should be flipped, so I'll fix that.
Spring of twenty-three class is pretty solid.
Yeah, so we expect the um, juniors of this year um, to trend back in that upward direction, but it kind of just depends on the cohort of students, because we have such small classes, one or two, you know, student scores can, can sometimes make that, that much of a, a difference. So we'll start to collect those, that longitudinal data, and see if we notice any differences over time in specific areas. This is our, um, the number of students that are taking um, AP classes, so um, the red represents the students that are taking AP courses virtually or self-study, so um, seventy-nine is the number of students that are taking in-person courses. Luckily, we've got amazing teachers that are certified to teach AP courses here, but we also have some students that have interest in macroeconomics, um, for example. Um, and so we don't have enough students to run a macroeconomics AP class, but we're able to offer that virtually for students based on their um, EDP, and if there's interest in that. All students can take an AP test, so if you were a junior and you said, I want to take the AP Spanish exam, you can sign up for that and self-study. Um, we have a few students that are doing it in certain areas. Um, teachers are kind of working with them and doing different things, but that, those are our numbers. That has grown each year, so we're really proud of that. And then our CTC, CTC students, um, also, we have thirty-six juniors and seniors that are in the, at the Protect Center this year, and that gets more next year, I think it's forty, but I have to check my numbers. Um, dual enrollment, these are our numbers for the fall and the winter, and then early college is, we have two students that are graduating this year with early college. So again, just trying to grow those opportunities. MCC does a great job of coming in and talking to our students and getting them connected with that.
Yep. Um, thank you guys. One of the things we've talked about over the last couple of years is, yeah, we can compare ourselves to Meskegon County, or this region, or the state, um, and that, and we look good, we, we, we know that. But um, one of the things we've talked about is, okay, how can we compare ourselves um, with other schools that excel academically, but look a lot like us? So we pulled this, uh, these ten comparable schools, they are um, similar size, um, similar socioeconomic makeup, um, similar um, uh, race makeup, but they, they look like us, or I should say, we look like them, for the most part, to the best of our ability, and they all are top-performing schools in the state. So we said, let's start to compare ourselves to some people that we want to compete with. Um, and the best part is, this is the worst slide you're gonna see in this group, and it's actually not that bad. So we're the, we're the one with the star on it each time. So this is uh, Language Arts Grade Three, so again, these are snapshots of the cohorts of kids, but then there's also some combined ones that you're gonna see as well. Um, you're also gonna see a common theme with that school down at Bridgman. Um, they're doing very, very well. Um, we've actually, in years past, had groups that have gone to Bridgman, they've come here. We're gonna start that partnership back up um, next year, and we're gonna try to share some ideas with, with them, and hopefully get some ideas from them. Um, but uh, they're, they're doing very, very well. So to, to reiterate though, before I show any more slides, these are like the tops of the top of schools that look like us. So um, go ahead, Paul. This is third grade math, a little bit better than the ELA. We can move through these, Paul, as I hesitate. Um, this is Language Arts fifth grade, and you can see we're doing quite well. These are all based off Mstep, math, fifth grade. ELA, sixth grade. Yep. Yep, go ahead. So here's where we, so those were all elementary scores, right? The, up to sixth grade. We're doing a lot of different things since, in our elementary school, since Mr. Allen took over. I think we're gonna start to see those things, those scores start to trend up. But also, there's a lot of other things. That's where we get a lot of our new students, and then they kind of stay with us and, and advance. Now we're gonna take a look at, so this is EL, um, this is PSAT now, so it's not Mstep. Um, uh, so PSAT, we put a little more stock in, so does the nation. Um, so this is ELA, any, any of our students and/or any of those other district students that took the PSAT that year. Um, and you can see, by the time our kids hit middle school, we're doing pretty darn good. Um, next slide, math, the same. Got a couple of those schools that are better than us, but you know, we're, we're right there. And uh, let me see, that's PSAT math, yep, um, so that's basically middle school math. Uh, go ahead, Paul. Now we're on to the SAT, and there's any kid that took the SAT in that year of twenty-three, twenty-four, which is the newest data that we obviously could have, um, and this is for the Language Arts reading and writing. Again, we're doing quite well, and then if you do the next one, Paul, um, this is the math. So the, the bottom line with these is, we excel when it comes to kind of this region, but when we compare ourselves to people that we want to compare ourselves to, we're still looking pretty darn good, and we, you know, we've got some, probably some things we can learn from darn Bridgman there, but, um, so go ahead, Paul and Steve. So we talked a little bit about the US News and World Report, and why we, why we're gonna use that, and why we want to be ranked in the top ten percent, not only at the state, but up, as, in the nation as well. We talked about the, the things that go into the equation for that, and those are those bullet points on that right-hand side. Um, and as you can see, um, right now with the newest data that we have, um, our national ranking, we're in the top thirteen percent. In Michigan, we're in about nine-point-five percent, um, so we're, if, you know, we're in that area. Um, and then in, in this, the Meskegon region, we're the top-ranked um, school, high school. Middle school, they, in elementary, they don't really do a national ranking, because there's just so many different numbers, and like one school district might have ten middle schools, you know, in these big districts, and twenty elementary schools. So they don't really do national rankings, but you can see our, our middle school right now in the state of Michigan. But you can see our our middle school right now in the state of Michigan is ranked at 9.6, pretty much where our high school is. And just like our scores showed on Mstep, we're we're lower in the elementary right now. I think what we're going to see in time is that's going to be changing because of the work that we're doing. So now we're moving on to I think our next goal, which is wanting all kids to feel safe and accepted. I'm going to do a handoff again to John and Jen to talk about the data that reflects the work that our our programs are doing. But again, I'll point out those bullet points under the progress to date. Those are just snapshot. It doesn't get everything that's happened this year, but it shows some of the things that we've we've done this year, targeted rate app, specifically the strategic plan goal. So hopefully a lot of those things sound really familiar because you guys should know about those. So I'm going to do a handoff again. You can go to the next slide.
Or unless you guys want to talk about any. Those are just a lot of the things that are being done district wider happen in the last 12 months to help support that goal of helping kids feel safe and accepted at our school and every grade level. So that's not exhaustive either, but you can read, so we don't have to say. This is, is this the high school or was this district wide?
So this is, we asked all students, we've done did a climate and culture survey to see, there was many questions. We pulled out the ones that talked about related to this goal to of our strategic plan and if they feel connected at school. And so you can see that the strong they agree and they agree, pretty good chunk of kids that feel connected at school. And then there's the yellow and the orange yellowish that don't disagree with that. The next one was teachers treat me with respect. I'll get really good participation in this last year. We didn't have as much as great participation. I want to say it was 95% completed it, but I have to check with Julie. Is that number sound right to you?
It was above 90% of students did this.
So that was really good. Our last one was not that great. So we didn't, we weren't sure that the data had a ton of fidelity because we're like, if you only get, you know, a smaller percentage, but we felt really positive about this because almost every student participated. And then school is a place in which I feel safe. So you can see the students that would agree and disagree with that. And then.
I was just gonna, yeah, the elementary actually had uncannily well matched responses to what was just shown here.
Exactly.
And those were selected not just because they looked so good, but because research has shown those questions correlate to your problem behaviors and better academic performance. And we look good, so we want to.
One of the cool things that we've done is we along with the just the overall climate and culture surveys, we do check and connect with students where we ask a little more specific questions. So at the beginning of the year, we set and this room is full of every single student's name and teachers go around and they we talk about what does it mean to be really connected with the student? And we ask our staff to identify who are they truly connected with? And then we can be like, what kids do we intentionally need to build a connection with, right? And then we ask the students, do they feel like they have a connection with someone at school? And if so, to name them to an adult and a student. And then we cross reference that data. Julie Van Bergen and Sue Gerstreit, I wish they were here because they are incredible. John and I have done a lot of this work, but it's been really hard to like dive into the data. And they can dive into the data and make it really usable for us to be intentional. So one of the research-based interventions that came out of that was silent mentor. We've done silent mentor for a few years, but not with a ton of fidelity. We were just kind of like thrown in at the wall and seeing fisticings. Well, this year, thanks to Sue and Julie, we were able to be really intentional to be like, which students do we truly want to silent mentor? So based on the students that didn't feel a connection and the kids that the staff saw, we were making sure that no kid would fall through the cracks. And so this is just some fun things that staff, a little informal feedback that staff gave. Can't read that far away. That just talks about some notable wins. So teachers said they were getting their mentee to participate in class anymore. The students started to initiate greetings. The the student was more vocal, more positive. The students were talking. So just really be intentional about those connections with each student and hopefully helping to increase that feeling safe and connected.
Sure. So the SRSS is the Student Risk Screening Scale. So it's just a teacher's survey of all their students at the elementary. It's in their class at the middle school, high school, if they're Northside teacher, I believe. And they do it three times a year and it's a pretty well correlated predictor of if that student's going to have problem behaviors. And I there's external problem behaviors on the left, which is stuff that's easy to see disruption, all those kinds of things that are external, whereas internalized problem behaviors would be withdrawing, shutting down, not participating or having those connections with staff or other students. And so we do, so the other surveys surveys have been anonymous. This is not. And so our mental health and wellness teams know who are the kids in those red parts of the bar. And we connect with them and do things like silent mentoring and a number of other interventions. So we use it for individuals, but we also use it to kind of track how our building-wide initiatives are working for all the kids too. So that's what we're looking at. And it is, is it? Yeah, it looks like district, right?
This is a cool one because I think it talks about how the work that they do in the elementary really sets the foundation for success as kids get older. So this is a snapshot of our current seventh graders over time. And yes, we chose this grid on purpose because this is a group that John's team has been working for a long time. I think we're impacted by lots, many factors and discipline things. And you can see the really cool part is the green over time goes, has gone up and increased. And the red, those at-risk behaviors has has decreased. And so it really speaks to the restorative work that they were doing with the script in fourth grade and all of the things in fifth grade and how they get to middle school and all of the pieces that the system IPBAS, elementary, middle school, high school, but then also restorative circles individually and small groups and trails groups and all of the things that we're able to do that sometimes it doesn't feel like it's making a difference when you're in the forest, but then you look and you're like, oh, what we're doing is is working. So to be able to track that cohort over time is really powerful.
Thanks, guys. Third goal, the third goal has to do with communicating with our full school community. And you can see some of the progress updates on on that. One of the things I wanted to highlight are a couple of things. The quarterly admin and board community communication is a brand new one. Our our goal there was or our plan there was that that's going to be totally academic based. We're not going to have pictures of the sports teams and we do that in a lot of other places. But we wanted a communication piece that went to the community that focused strictly on academia. And we've got that out. That went out several times this year and it will continue to do that. The Norse Advocate Group has been a blast. What a ton, what a ton of fun and what a great group of people. Thank you. She's involved with that. She's involved with everything. You can just say, Leanne, put tag her name with almost any of it, but. So that Norse Advocate Group is off and running. That's going to continue. And you can see some of the others, the another one I just wanted to point out those the just started to get rolling a parent cafe that you're going to hear a whole lot more about. That's a group at the elementary school of current parents that support our new parents that come to us and then kind of do a handoff to those new parents when they're not new anymore, so that they can work with the brand new ones. So it just keeps on rolling. We will be doing a survey to our school community on how they how it these things went. But also could there, are there other ways that we can communicate better? And we'll just continue to try to do a better job with that. Go ahead. And I think the next one's the app. Yeah, we wanted to put a plug in for our app. We are expanding the use of this. And when we talk to groups of parents, especially they like love it. So we continue to push the app. We're almost everything that we're doing is you're going to find out because of the app if you're on it. Other ways as well, but this kind of holds everything all in one spot. The lab school has to do with finances. And a lot of people don't like to talk about money, but we have to as a board of that and it's part of the deal. We need to be fiscally conservative and conscientious to make things happen over a long period of time. And you know, this year you've had, we've gone through a successful audit. We're going through the budget. We went through the budget amendment process. Now we're going to the final amendment where you're going to see a budget in June for this school year, but also a projection for next school, next school year. Paul, you can go ahead and flip that next one. As many in the room know, currently our our this year budget is showing a negative around $440,000. That's not good, but we also we're going to be riding a roller coaster with COVID funds. We're coming to the end of that ride. So we're going to hopefully end this year about where we went into things when 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 COVID happened. That 437,000 isn't going to be that high, it doesn't look like, as we're, you know, getting closer to the finish line. Probably going to be looking at more like half of that, having to come from fund balance this year. And we have a goal set for ourselves that next year's budget will be a balanced budget that the board will be viewing when we get to that point in June. But what does that mean? We've got to shave some things here and there. That's one of the reasons we're looking at expanding that shared service and we're looking at our our staffing needs. We're going to probably be one, excuse me, one less teacher overall on our on staff next year because that's where the needs are. We don't, we don't necessarily have that, need that position. And so we're looking at everything to try to make up that about $200,000. And that's our, that's our goal going into June's finance meetings. Again, there it's all wrapped up into one. You've probably seen those one pagers around the around the building. It's our mission, our vision, our values, and then our goals created from our strategic plan, all wrapping together. Need that clicker thing. I'll make it easier any next time. Before I close, I do want to say again, thank you to the whole, the whole administrative team. There's a lot of work to go into this and and having, trying to figure out the flow and what data do you use and what don't you? And how do we show a real picture? And I just, I got a ton of respect for the group that I get to work with and they did a great job, great job with this. So huge thank you to them. And to close, overall, the state of our district is strategically moving forward to support student academic achievement, student well-being, effective and transparent communication with our full school community. And we're doing so in a fiscally responsible manner. So you'll continue to see this similar presentation in years to come and then we'll be able to keep adding data to it that kind of gives us a better look at what is, what are things looking like over time, which we've never had a good way to do that. We think we've got a pretty good tool now. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Kurt, and the team. That is a tremendous presentation for State of the District.
And we know the board likes 10 minute or less presentations. We just couldn't do it.
Something this important may be a little harder. Okay, we're going to move on in the agenda to new business. And the first item, 669, the approval of Karen Walberg's retirement.
Yeah, we got a couple of those on here today that regretfully, but we are, we're having a very, very solid special education teacher and just a quality, quality person moving on and her next ventures in life. So we wish Karen well and she's going to be missed.
I will regretfully move to approve the retirement of Karen Walberg.
Okay, motion. And a support. Any further questions? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. All right, next on the agenda, item 670, the approval of the MAISD Biannual Election Resolution. Thank everybody on the board that's gone through your packet knows that there are two openings on the MAISD Board. They only had one person seek for the two spots. What we need to do is approve the resolution in our packet. And part of that resolution is appointing one delegate and one alternate. And prior to the meeting, I did talk with Lisa Winter, who is willing to be the first delegate. And Lisa Potts will be the first alternate in that resolution. And this will be a roll call vote too. So has anybody had a chance to review that? Anybody had any second feelings about being a delegate? Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve it.
I move to approve the MAISD Biannual, Biannual Election Resolution as presented.
Okay, motion in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote, starting Ms. Winter.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Next on the agenda is the approval of the MAISD Budget Resolution. I did attend that meeting a week ago or week and a half ago. And it is just a kind of a formality to approve their budget. It's a big budget, I'll tell you that, but it supports all of the, all of the kids in the county. And a lot of funding comes to us through through that budget. So I am recommending that we approve the budget as it was presented. Or I'm sorry, the resolution as presented.
I move to approve the MAISD Budget Resolution.
Support. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, roll call vote. Mrs. B?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. All right, night, 672, Offer of Additional Probationary Status as Recommended by the Administrative Staff.
Yeah, and if you want to, Steve, you could do 672 and 673 together. They're on the same sheet. And as you can see, we've done some hiring over the last few years and got some people that are working their way through the tenure process. And then we do have one that is being recommended for tenure due to being with us long enough where we could recommend that. And you can, if you can do both if you want at the same time, but you don't have to.
Hearing that, I would entertain a motion to do both at the same time.
All right, so I'll move to approve both the probationary statuses as well as the tenure. New Business 672, 673 as presented.
Support.
Any questions?
My only question is, I thought that Cora Howard's been here a lot longer than four years.
She she has, but not in a teaching capacity role.
Okay. Right to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item 674, Approval of Burned-Out Belloc's Retirement.
Yeah, how, what do you say? I liked her letter when that she said in there that she was always told she would, she would know when it was time. And it's it's time. So she, she had been telling John and I that, no, a few more years, few more years. Obviously that. but obviously, that changed. And again, uh, what an incredible, incredible person. Wish her the best, in probably what'll be her world travels from now on, so, would be my guess.
Yep.
I move that we approve Bernadette Bellock's retire, requi-, more, excuse me, retirement request.
Okay, a support? Support. Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed, say nay. Okay. Item 675, approval of the membership renewal of the MHSAA.
Just that annual renewal.
Yep.
You have to do if you're gonna be affiliated with, uh, the state association.
I move that we approve the membership renewal for MHSAA.
Support.
Okay, any other questions on that? Okay, uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed, nay. Motion carries. Information, and for the crowd as well, uh, starting in June, there'll be a lot of construction in here, so we will be moving our board meetings to the city council order. So, future meetings over there, we will...
June through August.
June through August, and notices will be posted, and it will say on there that it's at City Hall. Okay. Board comments, start with Lisa Winter.
Wait, so many things to comment on. I guess, welcome back, Mrs. B, that is the most important, I'm so glad that you're back.
I appreciate your support.
Wishing, uh, Ms. Walberg and Ms. Belock all the happiness in their retirement. Thank you for the State of the District presentation today, um, a lot of good things there. But, thanks for all that you do in always putting what kids need first.
I will, oh, no, no, put you back, it's very good to have you. And yes, um, with, you know, regret, uh, some more retirements, um, a very longstanding staff. Again, just what a testament to what a great place this is to be educated and to educate, so I really, uh, wish, uh, both of them well. Thank you for that great presentation, uh, the State of the District, and, um, what wonderful, transparent information to, uh, uh, the whole district. Thank you to everybody who's getting ready for graduation and end of the year festivities. It sounds like it's going to be really wonderful and ethical again, so just a little plug to everybody come out. It's a great place, um, I think Jen has said before, to bring, you know, littles so that they have something to aspire to. And this really is our, our, you know, crowning achievement, uh, for these students, so... Happy graduation week to everybody.
I'll just reiterate some of those, welcome back, Mrs. B, it's great to have you back. Excellent presentation that you put together, I appreciate, uh, all the hard work. I'll also throw some kudos to the business office, as they're getting ramped up, trying to put together the end-of-the-year budget, the next-year budget, and a lot of things going on for everybody this time of year, so... Also, um, disappointing to hear about retirements, but in the same token, I do wish them the very best, and thank them for the time they, they did give us. And that's it.
Yeah, I echo everything, uh, so, uh, we always get the retirement letters this time of year, so it is, uh, a little bit regretful to get those, we hate to see good people leave, but, uh, time to open the door for, for some new, young, eager talent to come back to North Muskegon, so happy to see that as well. Congrats to those who are continuing on with us through their continued probationary, and, uh, Amanda, who's in tenure this year, so that's great. Looking forward to graduation, I think we, we got a good thing going at the, the Frolen Fall, so that should be, uh, a great event, as always, so I definitely look forward to that every year. And, um, yeah, things are getting pretty exciting here in North Muskegon as we are in the final countdown, right? So, uh, thanks, everyone, for keeping your sanity.
Make sure that's...
Make sure that's a true statement, right?
I, uh, I need to tell, to tell you a story about Bernadette. We come to school at about the same time, and she'd wear her, her high heels, so I always knew where I was, from my car to the school where she is, cuz she goes click, click, click. Right, and of course, nobody else is in the hallway, it's just the two of us, so I always knew. But if I walked down the hall any other time of the day, she'd be out there clicking away. She, get the biggest kick out of her, she's just a wonderful person. She loves what she... And, oh, thanks to Mr. Delong for putting on an excellent field.
Yes. The weather was pretty decent, too.
Yeah. Almost got rained out once.
Good week. I just, uh, feel like I have to, I've been talking a lot about academics today, but, uh, before coming to Finance Committee meeting, I was able to go down to our new baseball field. It's not completed yet, but it's playable, and, um, the, there was a ton of people down there, and everyone was having a great time, and, you know, just a sign of things to come. It's just gonna get better and better down there, um, but it was great to have our, our guys, uh, playing on, on their home field finally. So, um, that's, uh, make, get you, starts to get you excited about the work on the tennis courts that's gonna have, be happening later this, uh, summer. It's, uh, exciting, yeah. Good, thanks.
Okay, meeting is adjourned.